Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is October 24th, 2018. We are holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. Our order of business will be honor and excellence, followed by the CEO report, public participation. We will then go into executive session and then return to start the voting process. As always, I want to remind everyone that courteous and civil behavior is both expected and very much desired. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I part with allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong?
Present.
Member Garza?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
And President Clark?
Present.
Four members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Dr. Janice Jackson, our CEO, Mr. Joseph Moriarty, our general counsel, and Latonya McDade, our chief education officer. Thank you.
Okay, I guess today we have a new shadow student with us. And who's going to do the introduction?
Aisha, our honorary student board member.
Thank you.
Good morning, President Clark. Today, we are joined by Sophia Marzett, a senior at RTC Medical Prep High School. Sophia, would you like to say a few words?
I would like to thank President Clark and the members of the board for this opportunity. I'm a dedicated and enthusiastic student. I'm a student ambassador, member of the Health Occupation Students of America, Student Council, French Club, and a Schuler Foundation scholar. I also love to volunteer and am involved in several other extracurricular activities. I am honored to be a part of this board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Chief, are you going to proceed with honor and excellence?
Yes, President Clark. Good morning, everyone. We begin each board member, each Board of Education meeting by recognizing the talents and accomplishments of our students and school communities. And today, we're really excited to honor two district schools that received the National Blue Ribbon Award this year. Brooks College Prep Academy and Edison Regional Gifted Center were among 349 schools in the entire country to receive this recognition in 2018. These are obviously impressive schools. Both Brooks and Edison have a long history of academic excellence. But what really sets these schools apart are the people, caring adults who do whatever it takes to give their students the education they deserve. The teachers and staff at Brooks sponsor clubs, lead school organizations, and coach athletic teams. They even take their students on international trips to Spain, Italy, and Japan, just to name a few. And the staff at Edison is no different. The school's security officer coaches basketball, the school clerk teaches yoga, a yoga elective, and every single teacher runs at least one after-school activity for students. Even those who have retired from Edison never leave the school community, returning as mentors and enrichment specialists to continue to serve students. The adults at these two schools have dedicated their lives to making sure their students have a robust and high-quality education. It's an experience that has driven students to work harder, reach higher, and achieve the prestigious recognition that we celebrate here today. The blue ribbon is a powerful symbol. It is a sign of accomplishment, of excellence, and of our district's drive to succeed. Please join me in congratulating Principal Jackson from Brooks and Principal Valentine from Edison on making our district and our city proud. Principal Jackson, you want to?
Sure. Good morning. My name is Shenee Jackson, and I am the proud leader and principal of Gwendolyn Brooks College Prep, where our mission is to ensure each student learns at high levels. Today, I have with me Mr. Reed, who is a recipient of the Fulbright Distinguished Teacher Award and will be leaving for the Netherlands this year to study how STEM teachers can better develop ways to leverage resources. And we are here today on behalf of our entire school community, and we say thank you. The recognition of the blue ribbon brings great pride to our school and Chicago Public Schools. It is really about the collective result of our hard work, dedication, and the commitment of our students, parents, teachers, counselors, staff, admin, and LSC. Our team is passionate and committed to providing our students with a high-quality education and equitable opportunities to pursue their post-secondary goals. We look forward to continuing to engage in this meaningful work to ensure our students continue to excel. Today, on behalf of our entire Brooks team, I would like to thank you, President Frank Clark, and the rest of the entire school board, Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Janice Jackson, and Chief Education Officer, Latonya McDade, for your support of our students and our school. Thank you so much. We are incredibly honored to be here today.
Good morning, distinguished board members. My name is Karen Valentine. I'm the principal at Edison Regional Gifted Center. I have with me today Ms. Rosie Patel. She's a fantastic steam teacher at our school and recipient of the Golden Apple Award. We are here today to say thank you so much for your support of Edison. And we are thrilled that the hard of, hard work of our school community is being recognized in this way. And it was without question a tremendous honor to be able to represent the hard work of Chicago Public Schools on the national stage. This award for us is a reminder that anything is possible when a group of really committed and passionate school community members come together to create and enact a shared vision, and we recognize that all of you are a significant part of that work. So we wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, distinguished board members, Chief Jackson, Chief McDade, and also Mr. Moriarty. Thank you for all of your work, because this really is a collective effort. This award is the culmination of years and years of hard work and effort from many people, many people who have worked at Edison for several years, like Chief McDade said. And we could not do this without you. So we feel very, very honored and privileged to represent Chicago Public Schools on the national stage, and want to take this opportunity to say thanks.
Board members.
I'd just like to say congratulations on this very prestigious award and for thanking the communities the way that you did and to bringing these very selected teachers with you to also represent the award. And for your work as principals, because we know how that all works. And thank you very much for our, for your talk today and including us in that as well. Thank you.
I would only add that, listening to both of the principals speak, it is a tremendous honor serving on the Board of Education. We get, you gave us recognition, and we do try to support you. The real honor is the work that you do, and then the results is what you get with your student bodies and these types of honors, particularly these national honors. It makes everything we try to do more than worthwhile. The reward is really listening to you, realizing what you've done in your schools. I've been to one of your schools, I haven't been to both. And of course, I remember your, your blue football field. I've only seen that one of the places when I was in Boise. They have a blue football field. Did you do it first, and they copied you? Or it was just the opposite? But in any event, this is a wonderful, wonderful academic achievement of which you, your teachers, and frankly, your student body and your, and the parents should all just be very, very pleased, and I'm sure that they are. Thank you so much.
Congratulations again, and thank you so much for your leadership. Earlier this month, we celebrated Principal Appreciation Week. Schools across the district celebrated their school leaders, and we use our social media channels and blog to highlight several principals who are doing exemplary work and changing lives. I've been a CPS principal, so I know that the job is not for the faint of heart. Leading a school can be all-consuming, but the reward is so great. Our students are growing at a faster rate than children in almost every other school district in the country, and much of the credit goes to our principals, who are the foundations of our schools. They connect with our families, they inspire our teachers, and motivate our students, all while shaping curriculum and juggling budgets and facility needs. They create positive learning environments where children feel safe, supported, and free to be exactly who they are. I thank everyone who took the time to acknowledge our school leaders during Principal Appreciation Week and pledged to continue providing these leaders with the resources they need to support their growth, fuel their passion, and encourage the innovation that they bring to our schools. This concludes the CTO's report. I'll now turn things over to our CEO, Dr. Janice Jackson.
All right. Good morning, and thank you, Chief McDade, President Clark, and other board members. I just have a couple of quick updates that I'd like to share. First, I'd like to start by sharing that last week, we launched a series of community meetings to gather input on how the district can partner directly with school communities to offer more robust academic programming. We have hosted a total of three meetings over the past two weeks, with more to come, for a total of 16. As I stated, when I first became CEO, we planned to do a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach to work directly with the community to figure out what type of programming and schooling is necessary in order to make sure that all of the, all of the desires of their heart are met. We created the ARA, which is, stands for the Annual Regional Analysis, to give stakeholders a clear picture of the school communities. It's a comprehensive set of facts that allows people to address questions that have been talked about for many years. Some of those questions include school quality, enrollment patterns, school options, as well as the program offerings by region. The ARA is the latest in a series of resources that the district has developed in order to better communicate and keep our communities informed. Efforts like the Citizens Guide to the Budget, as well as our open process, open RFP process for academic programming, which allows schools, school communities to submit proposals to add high-quality academic programs like STEM, IB, Fine and Performing Arts, World Language, and many others to meet the needs of the students in their school. We want our stakeholders to know everything that we know, and we also want to make sure that they feel that their voices have been heard as we make critical decisions about the direction of their schools. Only then can we collaborate with the school communities about equitable investments that help build on our students' current momentum. The data contained in the ARA does not draw any conclusions. It is simply a tool, it's simply a tool for our school communities that they can use to analyze their needs, but more importantly, advocate for the type of academic programming and investments that they would like to see in their schools. So far, we've received positive feedback from the first three community meetings, and I hope to, I hope we continue that trend. Between now and the end of this calendar year, we will be hosting the remainder of the meetings. If anyone is interested in attending those meetings, I know that some board members have been able to attend, and we appreciate that, as well as the public. This is an open invitation. You can find the dates and times and locations on our CPS website at cps.edu backslash calendar. We're also promoting that on our social media accounts as well. I would also like to provide an update on Go CPS, which is in its second year of implementation. Last year, we launched this simplified Common Application Process for all academic programs offered to students and families in our district. As I've stated in previous meetings, over 93% of our students participated in our inaugural year, and we're looking to increase that number going into the second year. It's also important to note that 81% of our students received one of their top three choices through the Go CPS process, and again, that's an area that we are continuing to look at to improve. In year two, we're working to ensure that even more of our parents are aware of Go CPS. We've made some improvements with regard to language and access in communities that needed more support from a technological standpoint. And we want to remind parents that this year, all applications are due on December 14th, and that they can be found on our Go CPS website, which is go.cps.edu. The website is set up so that they can research the many academic opportunities and programs that we have available in Chicago Public Schools, and just to reiterate, programs such as IB, Advanced Placement, STEM, classical selective enrollment schools as well. The district has significantly expanded access to high-quality programming in recent years, and Go CPS is a one-stop shop for families to research, explore, and apply for nearly all of the options that CPS has to offer. We're really excited about this second year, and we hope that you will help us spread the word about the Go CPS application so that we can increase the number of parents and students participating in this. We look forward to getting this information out to educators and families later this week so that they have, so that they can gain better insight into their schools. And now, I would like to conclude the CEO's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Go ahead.
Yes, President Clark, I, I do have a comment. I was able to attend one of the ARA meetings, and I'd just like to make everyone aware, the public aware, and my fellow board members, that sitting from this seat, you, you find a time sometimes when you can bring everything together. And I think the vision that you have for the ARA is, is really critical and important, and so helpful to building those communities. Because in the ones that I attended, the communities were not quiet, but very participative and very well-attended. And even though the community development may be noisy at times, there is definitely the opportunity to have better decisions being made as a result of this vision of yours and the strategy to have pockets of community all over the city that can really give honest and helpful input into everything that's being done here. I think, again, sitting from this seat, you wonder how you can bring all of that together, and I think that this is one of the strategies that does that. And my kudos to both Chief McDade and you for implementing this strategy for all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I have one announcement, same when I make it every board meeting, and that's to encourage everyone to use our website, which is cpsboe.org. This is the best way to get office hours with board members and to have issues addressed that are important to you in between board meetings. Madam Secretary, please share the details for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The regular meetings of the Chicago Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, November 21, 2018, and December 19, 2018, will be consolidated and rescheduled to Wednesday, December 5, 2018. The December 5, 2018, rescheduled board meeting will be held at the CPS office. Advance registration will open at 10:30 a.m. on Monday, December 3, 2018, and close on December 4, 2018, at 5 p.m., or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed with today's public participation session. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with our staff member who will assist. He will line you up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for the speakers to see, and when there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as possible to the railing, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. Mr. President, if I may proceed by calling State Representative Theresa Ma, who's with us this morning, and then we have Alderman in the audience with us, as well as a CTU representative.
Okay.
Good morning, members of the Board of Education. I'm here this morning to speak in support of two schools in my district. Cooper Dual Language Academy, which is applying for a boundary reassignment so that it can expand to be a K through tw- eighth-grade school, and Oroco Fine Arts Academy, which hopes to expand its gifted program and become a world-language school. Both schools are high-performing schools in the Pilsen community. Cooper is a Level One Plus school, which has recently implemented a dual-language program. This program will allow students to become fully bilingual and master the Spanish language. For students to fully take advantage of the dual-language component at the school, it is most beneficial for Cooper to retain its students in a dual-language program at the middle grades level. In addition, we know that multiple transitions are difficult for students, and currently, students at Cooper must go through multiple transitions in their academic trajectory. Students must transition from Cooper to Oroco in the sixth grade, and a couple of years later, they must transition again into a high-school environment. I believe we want students to have academic continuity and a smooth transition into high school that will position them to be successful and on track academically. I know that allowing students to attend Cooper K through eighth will accomplish this goal. I will also add that I am aware of the under-enrollment that schools across Pilsen face. Cooper is no exception. Allowing for the expansion of the school to eighth grade will boost enrollment numbers so that the school can fully utilize both buildings. I believe both buildings are necessary for the school to maintain the academic rigor and the specialized education that students enjoy currently. For these reasons, I'm in full support of Cooper applying for a boundary reassignment and allowing the school to expand into eighth grade. In addition, it is my understanding that year after year, Oroco Academy has a long wait list of up to 90 students who must be turned away because they have limited capacity in their gifted program. Oroco is the only regional gifted center for Spanish-speaking English-language learners. Geographically, there are no other regional gifted centers on the southwest side, where there's a growing significant Latino population. By allowing Oroco to expand its gifted program, not only would we provide more quality options for families in Pilsen, but we would also provide the same quality educational opportunities to families on the southwest side as those in more affluent areas of the city. A recent analysis of quality seats in the district has shown that 72% of Latino students attend a Level One or Level One Plus school. In comparison, 91% of white students in the district are enrolled in Level One or Level One Plus schools. We must also remember that the district is almost 50% Latino. This is a clear indication that the school district needs to be better at providing equity in education to all students who attend CPS. Finally, this plan is part of the Pilsen Quality of Life Plan, which seeks to provide specialization at each school in the Pilsen community to counter the decline in enrollment, which all schools in the community has suffered. This plan has been thoughtfully contemplated by community organizations, principals, LSCs, and most importantly, the parents at each school. It is the parents' desire to have Cooper become a K through eighth-grade school and Oroco a gifted school. It is my understanding that this is not the first year they have attempted to make this plan a reality. The parents at both schools have spoken to each other, other parents, and community members, and have reached out to their elected officials. I am proud to stand by these community members and support them in their request. I hope that you will listen to them and support them as well. This plan is a win-win for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman.
State rep.
I don't know, was that a promotion or did it go the other way? My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now call the Alderman who are in the audience with us, and I'll call Alderman Villegas first from the 36th ward. We will then have Alderman Spazato from the 38th ward, and then Alderman Apolitano from the 41st ward, and then Recording Secretary from the CTU, Michael Brunson. Alderman Villegas?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good morning, President Clark, board members, Dr. Jackson, Arnie Rivera. You know, as a politician, a lot of times, we don't get thanked publicly, and so I saw this as an opportunity to come here, and I wanted just to publicly thank President Clark and Dr. Jackson and Latonya for working with me to get me a parent university at Stuymouth University. Stuymouth's a college prep, so I just wanted to come here publicly and say thank you. That is a big, that is going to be a big, great, it's going to be something great. All right, sorry about that. Something great for our, for our community and really allow the parents to get more engaged with the school. We have a clinic there, and so we want to use that as a resource center, and so I just wanted to come out here publicly and thank you guys for, for agreeing to do a parent university. It's a pleasure to work with your team, President Clark and President, and Dr. Jackson. So just wanted to publicly say that. A lot of times, you don't get that acknowledgement, so I just wanted to come down here and say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Our next Alderman?
And I really want to thank you. You are succinct and said nice things about us. Thank you very much.
Alderman Spazato, please.
Morning, everybody. President Clark, rest of the board members. Dr. Jackson, thanks for having me here today. We have an issue, but my understanding is they're working on resolving the issue right now, so maybe I could come up last. I'm just waiting for the word from law that we have some language straightened out, so is it okay if I come back after I get the word we have something straightened out here?
You said law, that's Joe. Joe, is there something that I don't know?
There may be something I don't know, so let me.
Yeah, they're working, we, you know, we.
Alderman, I believe in being direct and candid. I'm not aware of any specific changes. I know your issue regarding the.
The new school.
The agreement, yeah.
Right. Right. So the agreement got changed somehow, and we're here to make sure that the kids from my community can go to the new school.
I'm not aware of, of it being changed, Alderman, to be candid.
Okay. All right, so.
And the people here who would change it are not telling me it was changed. There, there may have been additional discussion.
Okay. So I just think we should hold off on approving something, or I come up and speak. I, I'm not sure what they wanted me to do. I thought they said this would, we'd, I'd have it when I got here, so I'm, I'm a little. You just want me to speak on what I had to say?
I think you should say what you have to say.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. So I'm here today. We built the new school in my, in my ward, and that school was, it's in my ward, but it's going to be a freshman academy for Taft. And the language states now that the kids from my community are going to maybe be able to go there if there's enough seats. Well, that's not something I'm going to stand for, or that's not anything that was part of my agreement. The agreement was that my kids will 100% be able to go to that school. So we can't say there's only 100 seats and my 300 kids can't go there. That's totally unacceptable. If there's 300 seats and I have 301 kids that want to go there and one kid can't get in there, that's totally unacceptable to me. So the agreement is, we have to make sure that we're, we're taking my community, put it into the Taft boundaries to alleviate overcrowding from Taft. We're providing a 1,200-seat school in my ward, but my, the kids from my community will be added into the boundaries, Cantidever Bridge and the south side of Smyzer to go there. So that's what I'm here lobbying on behalf, to make sure the kids from my community will be guaranteed to go to this school, that most of them, many of them, I should say, live blocks away, and many of them, you know, maybe a mile away, so. And that's about it. That's all I have to say. I appreciate all that you guys do. I know the, the pay isn't overwhelming for this job that you're doing, so I appreciate all the time you put in. But the. the time you put in, but thank you very much.
Alderman, your advocacy for your constituents is very clear. Thank you very much. And if any of you didn't understand what Alderman was alluding to, board members are paid zero, and I think that's what he was intending to say. Thank you very much, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next Alderman, please. Alderman Napolitano from the 41st Ward.
I'm Alderman Anthony Napolitano, the 41st Ward. Morning, Mr. President. CEO, Dr. Jackson. Board members, thank you very much for giving me the time to speak here. I think you've seen me about 15-plus times in the past. If you haven't seen me for a while, that comes with a humongous "thank you, thank you, thank you." You saw an overcrowding issue in our area, and you got to it, and I can't thank you enough for it. I'm hearing a different issue really quick as well. We have a special student at the Oriole Park School. His name is Liam. He suffers from a short bowel syndrome. Liam's individual education program that was completed this summer stated that he should have a nurse on hand at Oriole Park School. The problem that we're finding right now is that the nurse isn't always on staff. The ones that do show up, there's a little bit of a communication issue on behalf of what Liam's issues are and how to properly attend to him as a nurse. Liam suffers, like I said, from the short bowel syndrome, but he has a GI tube that is in place. The issue with the GI tube is it does come out a lot. It could have, there could be problems with the GI tube if the pump's not working properly, and it kind of maintains his proper supply of nutrients, as well as it could really affect his blood sugar. What I'm here today is, once again, my tagline, here hat in hand, can't thank you enough for what you do for our neighborhoods, just seeing if we can get to this problem and help us out a little bit at Oriole Park School. Again, there is a nurse that is assigned there, but they're there from 7:50 to about 11:50. We're looking for something more as a permanent nurse assigned. There's a couple other students that do have some medical issues that would, this would be a big help. I just, I think the biggest point here is, and I know, I know it comes down to budget and it comes down to finding the money to be able to supply these schools with what they need, but nurses are seen as extras. Special education students are not seen as extras. I just want to try to find a way to marry these two together a little bit easier so that we can properly service these children. Liam's an incredible student. He's an incredible kid. Oriole Park's incredible. I know this board is incredible, so I know at the end, we're gonna come to some sort of term. I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for the first half, and I'll be here afterwards to thank you for the second half. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. President, before Michael Brunson approaches the podium, I understand Alderman Salis is also in the audience, and wishes to address the board. Alderman Salis from the 25th Ward, please.
You guys might find this a little different from what you usually hear, but I'm here to support the Cooper Dual Language Academy and the Orozco program. And the reason I've got Teresa here is that I've heard my colleagues speak just before me, and they've focused on overcrowding. And many years ago, when I was a young 12-year-old working as an organizer at Pilsen, it's supposed to be funny.
Oh, okay.
This was one of the key leaders in the Pilsen Neighbors Community Council, and she wasn't a teacher then. She became a teacher later on and then went to Cooper and then to Orozco, but now she's a retired teacher, and she had, she along with the organization I used to work for, Pilsen Neighbors Community Council, have done a great job in putting together a education plan for Pilsen. And I've got to recognize Dr. Jackson right now, because since she took over, it's been going like hyperdrive. I've got STEM schools, IB schools, language academies. The schools are doing fantastic. It's no longer overcrowded. We've got room for a lot of programming. But I wanted Teresa up here because of that little short history I gave you. She also was the key leader when Orozco School was built, and that was in the first couple of years after I became Alderman, and I just wanted to give her a special recognition for being this outstanding leader slash organizer slash teacher slash retired leader, and her and the organization have a very special place in my heart, and I wholeheartedly support the program that you put together for Cooper and for Orozco. Thank you very much.
And I'm also here to support that. That's why I'm here, that initiative.
I want to recognize you. You guys doing, even though you don't get paid, you're doing a great job.
Just one comment as you leave, Alderman. I very much appreciate your recognition of the work of CEO, Dr. Jackson, and all of her staff. They are trying to address all of the issues that not only brought to us in this open forum and this board, but a whole list of issues that they prioritize to address, and I think they're doing a darn good job.
Across the city. You all should have been at the budget address that the mayor had last week. I don't think there was a more genuine recognition and applause and spontaneous people getting up to recognize Dr. Jackson. I haven't seen that in the 22 years that I've been here. So, thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now, please, Mr. Michael Brunson, Recording Secretary from CTU.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been a while. Allow me to begin with a poetic interlude. This is Paul Lawrence Dunbar. He was one of my favorites, and I know y'all doing another utilization thing. Please don't shut that school down. Anyway, we is gathered here, my brothers, in this howling wilderness for to speak some words of comfort to each other in distress. And we choose this for our subject. This was plain and by and by. And the Lord said, "Moses, Moses." And the man said, "Here am I." Now, old Pharaoh down in Egypt was the worst man ever born, and he had the Hebrew chilling down there working in his corn. Till the Lord got tired of his fooling and says, "See, I'll let him know. Look here, Moses, go tell Pharaoh for to let them chill and go. And if he refused to do it, I will make him root a hower for I emptied down in Egypt all the viles of my power." Yes, he did, and Pharaoh's army wasn't worth a half a dime, for the Lord will help his chilling. You can trust him ever time. Now, I just wanted to say that it seems like CTU has been blasting charter schools since Adam met Eve, but we have never, ever had a problem with the teachers and the parent professionals that work in those schools. I need to correct that. And what we have had a problem with is the business model. It's an exploitive business model that thrives at the expense of our so-called traditional schools. It's an exploitive business model that underpays workers and channels money up the food chain to the top, while the educators, the teachers and the parents, you know, they, they don't, they suffer. They don't get what they, what they deserve. Let me give you some facts here. Charter teachers and parents are underpaid and overworked with staffing shortages and lack of funding for basic services. All publicly-funded educators do the same work and all deserve equal pay and for equal work, but charter deny, charter operators deny our students educational resources, after-school programs, special education services, and wraparound supports and resources they need. Many charter schools are in violation of sped law, as there are multiple general ed classrooms with greater than a 50% ratio of students with IEPs. So, what we need to talk about is staffing, class size, sped compliance, teacher stability, and turnover, and equal pay for equal work. Here are some overriding issues. With the cost of living, average wage at Chicago charters is less than in Arizona, Oklahoma, and West Virginia. You may recall that these are the states that sparked teacher rebellions across the nation. And the negotiation with the operators that have been going on for about six or seven months or something like that have stalled on issues of classroom resources and working conditions, and again, the class sizes are too big, while millions of dollars go to management fees. So, the CTU is pushing back with a press conference and rally at 5:00 p.m. today, and the largest unionized operator at CPS, Acero, the educators are going to announce a strike vote and have vowed to hit the picket lines if things don't get better. I just thought that was apropos for the situation at hand, and I thought everyone should know that. And oh, by the way, everyone is invited to join today. It's gonna be at Fuentes Elementary School, 2845 West Berry at 5:00 p.m. So, I want to thank you for allowing me to say my piece today, and I want to quote another one of my childhood heroes, Buckwheat, of Little Rascals, and say, "Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
Thank you, Michael. So, CTU wants to represent the teachers in the charter schools.
CTU ACTS does represent the teachers at the charter schools. CTU ACTS, that's the Chicago Teachers Union Alliance of Teachers and Staff, and you'll be hearing from someone during, you know, during today's meeting, a little bit more...
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. President, if I may clarify, I am gonna call Chris Bayron next, who is the Chair of the ACTX Division.
Okay. There you go.
Mr. Bayron, thank you.
He's Speaker Number 29, Mr. President.
Hello, members of the board, people here. Good morning. So, you already know who I am now. We merged, we were part of Local 4343. I've been to this board a few times. We merged back in March. We represent 1,100 educators in charter schools at 34 different charter schools. And by the way, the, tonight, there's gonna be multiple strike authorizations at multiple bargaining units, so it's not just Acero. I won't tell you how many. Come on out at 5:00 to our press conference, and you'll find out. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about accountability. Charter operators like to say that they're accountable, right? They say that because it's easy to open and close them. Well, this board has shown that it's easy to open and close traditional district schools. So, this board takes, I believe it's 3% of the funding before the funding gets passed down to the charter schools. Where was the accountability at the Noble Schools, where for three years, until we went, until we started organizing a union there, for three years at one of their southside schools, almost all-black population, mostly white teachers, if there was too much noise in the hallway, a white teacher would stick their head out and say, "Hands up." Teachers had to, the students had to stop, put their hands in the air, and be silent. Like, where was the accountability? That went on for three years, right? We started organizing as a union, now there's accountability, right? Accountability is what unions bring to charter schools, right? We move dollars out of management hands and into the classroom. So, CICS is one of the operators. They run 16 charter schools. We represent four of them. CICS takes 16% of the funding before it gets passed down to, for example, their operator Civitas, who takes 10%. I know that Civitas issues paychecks, right? But what does CICS do for that 16%? Does anyone here have a ready answer? So, 3% for CPS, 16% for CICS, 10% for the Civitas Education Partners. That's a full third of the funding gone before anything gets to the school building. Like, what happens there? People who never entered the school building? They manage data? So, there's a crisis in our schools. It's a crisis with the charter industry. This model of the charter industry is, it's hurtful to us as taxpayers, because taxpayers, we don't want our educational tax dollars to be lining like an overpaid and overabundant management system, and it's harmful to our students who don't have the resources, the staffing, they don't have a stable education force. So, anyway, if, my question is like, what does CICS do to earn that 16% of the funding? It's all right if you don't have an answer now, bud. I'll be around.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bayron. Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speakers will be Speaker Number One, please, Stephanie Cirillo, followed by Speaker Number Two, William Ego, Speaker Nine, Dawn Moon, and 21, Betsy Vanderkook, followed by Speaker Number Three, Jose Abonse. Please state your name.
My name is Stephanie Cirillo, and I am a parent representative and the Chair of the Kilmer LSC. I come before you today to speak of promises, promises made to the students and staff at Kilmer Elementary, only to be broken or forgotten. In July of this year, CPS sent out a press release promising the largest capital plan in more than two decades to provide all students with high-quality learning environments. Yet Kilmer, with its leaking roof, crumbling walls, and shattered plaster, got nothing. My children still play on broken playground equipment and a playground that floods ankle-deep each time it rains. The press release also touted CPS's $336 million investment in prior facility needs, but despite months of requests from the principal, Kilmer only received $104,000 for repairs after the district was publicly shamed on the local news. CPS pledged to keep students safe, warm, and dry, but Kilmer students only received another broken promise. In that same July press release, CPS promised additional investments in neighborhood schools to provide students with new opportunities to learn in high-quality academic settings, despite Principal Papagenas attempting for four years to obtain an international baccalaureate program at Kilmer. Again, Kilmer got nothing. CEO Jackson promised school funding would be based off the previous year's enrollment numbers and that there would be no fall budget cuts. This turned out to be the most egregious of the broken promises. Kilmer's budget was $100,000 short at the beginning of the year, and the advance that Principal Papagenas asked for to ensure the bare minimum of Kilmer's operating costs was yanked out of the budget anyway. Kilmer is enrolling new students every day. How will Kilmer keep its promises to them if it has no money? Members of the board, the people of our community, demand you honor your promises. Fully repair the roof and facilities, fund the budget, give Kilmer Elementary what it needs to continue to provide a Level One education to its students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cirillo. Our next speaker from this group is Speaker Nine, Dawn Moon, please.
Good morning. I'm Dawn Moon. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm a parent member of the local school council at Kilmer Elementary, and I'm here to ask that you restore the $100,000 from our instructional budget that was taken away relative to last year's budget. Our administrators and teachers work relentlessly every day with already limited funds in a crumbling building to give our kids the outstanding education that they deserve. They've developed curricula compatible with requirements for the IB program that we hope to implement soon, and so it's frustrating to see all this growth cut off with a smaller initial budget, coupled with 10th-day funding cuts based on continually growing enrollments. I provided a chart that shows that our enrollments, our 10th-day enrollments were at 707, which was 15 under the advanced projection, but we've enrolled 13 more students since then, bringing our total to 720. We've enrolled seven students this week, and it's only Wednesday. So, and most of these students require intensive English-language learning, and some require wraparound refugee services as well. We appreciate all the positive changes that we see happening in CPS, but it seems that here's a systematic problem. When you use 10th-day enrollment as a proxy for total enrollment at a school, you're disadvantaging schools in high-turnover neighborhoods like ours. People move away in the summer and then steadily move into the neighborhood during the course of the year. It seems like it would make more sense, if you're going to use student-based budgeting, which does seem to have systematic problems, but if you want to stick with student-based budgeting, it would make more sense to use a maximum enrollment, an average enrollment through the course of the year, or actual enrollment, as opposed to the lowest enrollment, which is basically what we have in the 10th day. So, every year, our enrollments increase steadily, month to month, but we've actually never seen an increase in student-based budget funds. I've heard that under student-based budgeting, CPS's policy is to provide funds...
Miss Moon, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Please restore the $100,000 to our budget. We really need it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Speaker 21, please, Betsy Vanderkook, followed by Speaker Number Two, William Ego.
My name is Betsy Vanderkook. I'm a community representative from Kilmer Elementary on the LSC. I was originally a Kilmer parent when my daughter attended the school back in the '90s. I'm so happy to have the chance to be able to begin to increase instructional resources and get the school back into better physical shape. You may know from a recent CBS TV report that actually, it's in terrible shape. The roof leaks water into the third floor, saturating the walls. Plaster is falling, bricks are coming loose inside the building. These aren't new problems. They came with years of budget neglect. We were hopeful when the new billion-dollar capital budget was announced, but then we learned that Kilmer and the five other Rogers Park Public Schools did not receive a single cent. After the TV report, suddenly, $104,000 was offered to repair one wall. We need at least $5 million more. Just last Friday, I walked Kilmer's halls with Principal Jean... Just last Friday, I walked Kilmer's halls with Principal Jean Papagianis and State Representative Kelly Cassidy. It reminded me of walking them with my daughter. But as Jean pointed up towards the ceilings, I was heartbroken. Everywhere, cracks and fissures and water stains. On one parapet wall, everything is held together with yards of duct tape. I'm not kidding. State Senator Heather Staines is walking with us this Friday. She's going to be shocked, too. It may sound to you like we're asking for too much. We want repairs, we want an operational budget equal to last year's, and soon, an international baccalaureate program. Well, if you go without adequate funding for a whole generation, since my daughter was there, that's what you get. Rogers Park is at the northern end of the North Side, and the North Side is reportedly doing just fine, thank you very much. But with our more diverse and lower-income population, we have been told to sit in a corner by ourselves. We are simply asking for fairness and equity for Kilmer and Rogers Park Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderkook. Our next speaker, please, Speaker Number Two.
Arnie, where is this on your priority list?
Frank, the school is in need of a complete replacement of a roof, which that work will begin during the summer. The issue is, given the complexity of the job, it can't be, the majority of the work can't begin until students are out, and it is going to take about two summers in which to complete the project. But the project towards the replacement of the Kilmer roof will indeed begin next summer. What we're trying to do, and we tried to do this summer, we're doing now, is trying to bridge until we can actually get to that place. You know, the roof is in terrible shape, which is why, you know, we are taking the steps, at least, you know, in the short term, but more importantly, you know, a complete replacement will begin next summer.
Is that included in the question?
Yes.
Now, I walked in, but I also read through your letter. When we hear deplorable conditions, we know they need to be addressed. I had a pretty good idea what Arnie was doing, and I wanted you to hear it, because he also says something very factual. The major work cannot be done until the school year ends because it can't be done with the students there. Is that unreasonable to you? Do you understand that?
It could have been done last summer.
Well, that part, you're absolutely right, but I can't go back and change history. We're looking forward. He's given what I thought was a thoughtful and thorough answer, and does it address your issue?
Yes, sir, that is an addressed issue. We were, because we came out with $0 for all Rogers Park Schools for this coming 2019 year, we were so happy to hear that, but we did not expect that answer because, of course, everything is zero for Rogers Park. But Principal Papagianis has asked more information. You've just been told that they're looking into it, they're looking into it.
I regret that you didn't get this response prior to your speaking, but you probably would have spoken anyway. But you've got, no, that's okay. That's what people come here for. No problem with that. But I wanted to make sure that you heard and understood what's being done. Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't bring a poem today, so. I'm like, I could have bought a poem. But I wanted to give a little-
If Michael's just outside, you can go and, I'm sure he's got another one.
But I'm a Kilmer parent, and I'm on the local school council, and I have two children there. One is in the special ed classroom and one is in a kindergarten classroom. Both these classrooms are maxed out. So, just to give you an idea, the effect is, we have twice as many kids in the special ed classroom as our suburban counterparts would have, which means those kids aren't getting the attention they could be getting. And so, when at the end of the year, there's 30 additional kids that we haven't gotten funding for, that means we have maxed-out classrooms and we're jamming 30 kids into them. On top of that, and then we're never getting any money for it, which is why that $100,000 might not seem like a lot to you guys, but we're completely riding on the edge. It means that kids aren't getting taken care of. The community has done a lot to support Kilmer. The Cubs were up there last year. The CVS has worked with us to put the clinic in. Parents have been involved. The teachers are doing great after-school programs. The principal and her administration and all the staff there have gotten us from a probationary school to a Level 1 school. And having these issues is taken away. I already mentioned the effects on students when we jam all those extra kids and get it falling through the cracks, but it distracts our administration from focusing on things like bringing the baccalaureate program in to what's going on with the roof. And it distracts me. Like, today, I'd rather, this week, we're having a field trip. Instead of taking time off from work to go as a field trip chaperone, I'm here talking to you guys about the roof. So, the community has come together and put together this petition about the cuts and about the roof. And Heather Staines and Kelly Cassidy have signed the letter. I know you guys can read this. We had about 1,400 supporters. From what I understand, on the funding issue, we're still not getting that money back. We're still going to be shorted $100,000 less than last year, and we're probably going to end up much more than our 10th day, at least if the classroom's full. We've already added that many students. And then, so that's going to be a distraction for us from doing other work that we'd like to be doing, is figuring out how to make those cuts if we do have to make them.
Mr. Ego?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I did include the pictures as well, if you want to take a picture, look at the pictures. And you all are invited down to take a tour of what the conditions are.
Thank you. Our next speaker-
Hold on. Arnie, you're on.
Yeah. That's the same school.
That's the same school.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, I got confused, I'm sorry. This is the same school. You weren't satisfied with the answer you received?
I am satisfied, but I mean-
Okay, you wanted to speak. No, that's fine. You wanted to speak, and that's what we're here for. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Arnie. I got, thank you. It was the size of the document that threw me off. Okay. I understand.
Thank you. Can you please state your name?
Yeah, hi. Good morning. My name is Jose Abonse, and, if you want to introduce yourself. All right, this is Rebecca. My name's Jose. I'm the community organizer at Austin Coming Together, a local nonprofit in the Austin community on the West Side. Austin Coming Together has just wrapped up a year-and-a-half-long process for creating the Austin Quality of Life Plan. The plan will be published in November. Hundreds of Austin residents and stakeholders participated in the planning process, during which we identified seven areas of focus, 27 strategies, and 94 action items to enhance the community. Through this process, the community determined that we want to bring a high-quality high school IB program to an Austin high school. Michelle Clark is the best choice for the program. Although there are three West Side elementary schools with IB programs, the annual regional analysis shows there are no high school IB programs in the West Side region. The nearest high schools with IB programs, Noble, Pritzker, and Prosser, are both in other neighborhoods and predominantly serve a different population. Black students on the West Side deserve the same options that other communities have for their students. Michelle Clark is the perfect school to house a new IB program for the West Side. Only two West Side high schools have higher enrollment and ratings than Clark, and both are already filled near or at capacity. Clark has a steady enrollment that has been growing modestly in recent years while maintaining a solid 2-plus rating. Having both STEM and IB programs, Michelle Clark would be positioned to become a hub for West Side families able to serve different populations of students with complementary program types that match their varied interests and skills. We need to set the same high expectations for our students on the West Side that we set for our students in other areas of Chicago. Under Principal Anderson's leadership, the school community at Clark has dramatically improved in recent years. His open-door policy has created a school environment that is welcoming to parents, students, and community, and has fostered a level of parental involvement that will be conducive to successfully implementing a rigorous curriculum. With community support already mentioned, Clark has the full support of the network chief, the LSC-
Mr. Abonse.
... and numerous local community partners to submit a letter of intent this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speakers will be, the Asero Group has a designated speaker, Speaker Number Four, Socorro Vega, followed by Speaker Number Five, Isaac Kader, Speaker 14, Laquinta Manuel from Intrinsic Schools, please.
Good morning, President Clark, distinguished Board members, and Dr. Jackson. My name is Socorro Vega, and my son is Matthew. He's a first grader at Javida Adar Elementary School in Gage Park. I am very pleased to send my child to such a good school right in my neighborhood. I support my school in many ways. I volunteer at my special events, and most recently, I was named the BAC Parent by Literacy Action Committee President. Asero is committed to maintaining a student's culture and identity, and I want to support, and I want to do my part in support. In addition to a strong curriculum, Adar offers a lot of extra, our curriculum, clubs, sports, and activities to help the level well-run students and help them learn and grow beyond the classroom. In fact, Adar has a well-known mariachi band that were invited here last year to perform on the Board of Education. Adar is a part of Asero School Network. The charter schools provide a strong academic foundation for students at the elementary level to help them master the fundamental skills they need to succeed in high school. I believe the one thing that makes a school great is having a strong school community. I am proud to serve as president of the school's parent volunteer, and I'm always willing to support the school, whether it's volunteering in school events or coming down here with other concerned parents to, parents to advocate equitable funding. I believe every child in Chicago deserves to go to great public school, and it's important for parents to have choices. I am very pleased that I was able to choose Adar for my son, and I encourage the Board to continue to support for choice and for charter schools by ensuring fair and equitable funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers are Speaker Five, Isaac Kader, followed by Speaker 14, Laquinta Manuel. We will then have Speaker Number Six, Lawanda Curtis, Speaker 19, Robin Walker, and Speaker Seven, Joy Clendenning. Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi. My name is Isaac, and I'm a current senior at Intrinsic. And today, I'm here to talk to you about my experience at Intrinsic thus far and the leadership opportunities Intrinsic has offered me. When I first started at Intrinsic, it exceeded every expectation I had about high school. It wasn't a classroom with 30 desks in rows, but instead, it was a pod with three ways of learning. There was independent learning, collaborative learning, and student-to-teacher learning. And because of this, it allows students to learn at their own pace and excel. And I was given the opportunity in my sophomore year to take three math classes at once. I took geometry, Algebra II, and pre-calculus, all at an honors level. And because of this, I'm taking AP Calculus. And at a different high school, I would have had to start out at Algebra I, and then sophomore year, geometry, junior year, Algebra II, and my senior year, pre-calculus. But I was able to do this in two years at Intrinsic, which I'm greatly appreciative for. And this model allows students to tap into their own potential and become leaders. For example, for me today, I'm the president of the Collegius College Program at the University of Chicago. I'm the president of the National Honor Society at my school. And I founded a club called Esports, and it's the largest club in my school with 70-plus members. And also, with a supportive post-secondary team, they also helped me become the first Quest Bridge finalist for my school. And this all creates a framework for me and my future. And with this, it allowed me to explore paths that I didn't know were available to me. But this story isn't just for me, it's for everyone at my school, and everyone is supported just as much as I am. So, from our founder, Ms. Vega, and to our teachers, everyone believes in the power of our students, which is why I am proud to represent them today. Thank you so much. It's a great honor to speak to you guys today. Thank you.
You are a phenomenal representative for your school.
Thank you.
I have to be very proud of you, and you should be very proud of yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the next student then is Laquinta Manuel, last call. Moving on to the next speaker then, we have Speaker Number Six, please, Lawanda Curtis, followed by Speaker 19, Robin Walker. Last call for Lawanda Curtis.
Hello, Board members. My name is Lawanda Curtis. I am a parent of a first grader at Moving Everest. I am here today to speak in support of Moving Everest Charter School opening a second location. I appreciate Moving Everest because my child has been attending Moving Everest since kindergarten. His reading and math have improved a lot. I believe the improvements are two times the growth they were when I was teaching him at home. His teachers share with me now that he has grown also. Moving Everest has also helped my family by providing uniforms for my child, this ensured that he would attend the first day of school without any concern if I had any money to pay for proper uniforms. Moving Everest has also helped my family by providing an amazing after-school program in the building with bus transportation. This helps people like me who do not have babysitters or money to afford a safe location for their children while they are at work. I think a second location is a good idea because it would help more families in a community with children. It would give more children the opportunity to have great teachers. I can tell my son's teachers love their jobs, and it is very important to me that my child is in the school where that is the case. I know they teach, I know that the teachers love teaching. I am in full support of Moving Everest Charter School opening a second location. I hope you will give more West Side families the choice to give, to join Moving Everest's family. Thank you for your time, and thank you all for doing a great job, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
You have a nice day, too. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Robin Walker.
Hello, Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Robin Walker. I am a mother of a kindergarten at Moving Everest. I am here today to speak in support of Moving Everest Charter School opening a second location. I appreciate Moving Everest because they helped keep my son off the streets at a young age. Moving Everest is teaching him that there is more you can do with your day than being outside and not being productive. Moving Everest has helped my family by giving us the opportunity to let my son be at school all day through their partnership with the after-school program. They help with the uniforms at the beginning of the year because you can never have too many, especially with a little active boy. I think a second location is a good idea because it helps more families have the experience of Moving Everest. It gives more kids the chance to get off the streets and be productive people. I am full support of Moving Everest Charter School opening a second location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Joy Clendenning. As she approaches the podium, I will then call Speaker Number 10, Catherine Hencheck, followed by Speaker 11, Joanna Praxter, and 18, Lena Witherspoon. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Joy Clendenning. I'm speaking today for Raise Your Hand. I'm here with Brenda Delgado, one of the Raise Your Hand Board members, who was at one of the ARA community meetings recently. We'd like to just point out really quickly, in a district of this size, the school board really needs to have a public meeting every month, and you should stop the practice of combining the November and December meetings. So, moving on to the ARA, we are wondering about the legally mandated educational facilities master plan and community engagement around that, but we'll hear more about that eventually. Instead of having schools compete for programmatic investments, we'd like you to work to develop an equitable plan to support all schools, especially the neighborhood institutions facing under enrollment, and we know you have a policy that you're voting on today about that. Do something about student-based budgeting. The SBB experiment has gone on long enough and is no way to fund schools. The CPS tool used to rate schools, the School Quality Rating Policy, also known as SQRP or SCORP, is too narrow and should not be used to talk about school quality, which is a big factor in the ARA. The state has a new school rating system. CPS is actually not required to have its own rating system. You could use this as an opportunity to get rid of the SQRP and engage with public school parents, students, teachers, and admin to come up with a way to rate schools which is broader and actually meaningful. In the ARA, so much of the data, the set of common facts, is generated using the SCORP. There is much in the ARA about quality seats and quality schools, quality which is defined by the SCORP. The SQRP does not tell parents enough about what's actually happening at a school. A school's level is mostly determined by standardized test scores and attendance. There's so much more that matters in determining the quality of the school. The data provided in the ARA is just not a comprehensive foundation for allocating resources or making high-stakes decisions, and we're concerned a little bit about the new initiative because of schools applying for programs, because there's an inherent lack of equity when you're asking under-resourced, under-enrolled schools to put these applications in. They don't have the supports to do this. I'm just finishing up. So we're concerned. The making schools compete for resources and specialized programs reinforces a system of haves and haves-nots and gives up on this "what makes a great school" conversation. So that's the conversation we want to have. No more CPS Hunger Games, end student-based budgeting, disrupt the SQRP. Instead, fight for equity and support all of our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clandening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker Ten, Kathryn Hencheck.
My name's Kathryn Hencheck. I'm speaking as a member of Parents for Teachers. I am a parent of a student at Vaughan Occupational High School, where I'm also on the LSC. As a parent and resident of Chicago, I'm here to ask the board to put a moratorium on the school closures announced last school year. By the end of the current school year, we'll have a new mayor, a new board, possibly a new CEO. Do we want to settle then with last year's disastrous decisions? Last year, you decided to close Harper-Hope, Team Englewood, and Roberson, Englewood's four high schools. You also decided to close National Teachers Academy, a top-rated school with a predominantly low-income African-American student body. These closings failed to meet even the district's own guidelines. They were not proposed or supported by their communities. The bulldozers arrived at Roberson before you even took an official vote, and parents at NTA have been forced to file a civil rights lawsuit in an attempt to save their school. These closings disproportionately affect low-income Black and Brown students, but more, they destabilize struggling neighborhoods by undermining the neighborhood schools. CPS's unfair student-based budgeting system creates a vicious spiral of decline. Any drop in student enrollment means a loss of programs and services for the remaining students. This causes some students to switch schools and makes incoming students look elsewhere, hastening the school's decline and weakening the fabric of that community. African-American students already travel further to school than any other students. Don't they deserve quality schools in their neighborhoods? Next year, we have a chance to make right on the mistakes we've made. I hope the new mayor and board will listen to the people of Chicago. Students, parents, teachers, and community members need to be truly involved in decisions. Let's give them a clean slate and work with them and put a moratorium on any further school closings this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hencheck. Our next speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker Number Eleven, Joanna Prachter, followed by Speaker Eighteen, Lena Witherspoon. We will then have Speaker Twelve, Josefina Pina, followed by Speaker Number Twenty, José de la Torre, and Speaker Twenty-Four, Irma Hidalgo.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Prachter. Principal Jameson Dunn and a community of educators at Catalyst Circle Rock has become a second family to my daughter Chloe and I. Chloe has been a scholar at Catalyst since kindergarten. She is currently in fourth grade. Catalyst has given Chloe so much confidence to where she's able to speak in class, asks for help when needed, and also able to help her fellow classmates. I'm thankful for the different activities that Chloe is involved in, such as student council and orchestra. Both will help Chloe to become a well-rounded scholar. I know Chloe's hard work and accomplishments will manifest itself in many more important ways. It will allow her to be accepted into academic enrichment programs, also will afford her opportunities to attend prestigious college prep, public, and private high schools. My main focus is to make sure that Chloe is prepared academically to compete with other scholars and attaining the best education she can get. And attending Catalyst has exceeded my expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prachter. Our next speaker, please, Lena Witherspoon.
Good morning, board members and schools. My name is Lena Witherspoon. I have three boys. I've been involved with Catalyst since 2005 to 2018. All three of my boys graduated from Catalyst Circle Rock. I was volunteering at the school the whole thirteen years. I learned and experienced a lot. Teachers need to be praised more for life. The patience and time they spend with our children is amazing. The staff at Catalyst made you want to stick around, and they kept a smile. They answered your questions and concerns. There were never a time you felt you couldn't come to the staff and principal and talk. I'm so glad my sons was able to experience good people and teamwork, good mentors. One of my sons is graduating this following year with a full college football scholarship and an academic scholarship, either to Yale or Ohio State. Thanks to him and all the pointers and support from Catalyst Circle Rock teachers and mentors, I would recommend Catalyst to any parents and teachers. And also, let's keep supporting the charter schools and also keep Kareem Pinder a good follow-up for all the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witherspoon.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker Twelve, Josefina Pina. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker, José de la Torre.
My name is José de la Torre. I am a resident of Chicago and a Chicago Bulls College Prep alumnus. I'm here to speak to you about my school's college process. I attended Bulls College Prep between 2009 and 2013. As early as freshman year, I was exposed to the idea of college. College flags and banners lined the hallways of my schools, and the teachers proudly represented their schools in the classroom. During my sophomore and junior year, I really started to get serious about college. Chicago Bulls College Prep ran my data in a program called The Robot, sometimes referred to as The Bot, which uses students' GPA, ACT scores, and ethnicity, stacks it up against data provided by colleges and Noble alumni, and then attempts to predict the student's likelihood of getting to schools while showing the graduation rates for those schools. You may have seen the recent article about The Bot in Chalkbeat. If not, I have provided you a copy. When I received the list, I applied to all ten schools, and Chicago Bulls College Prep paid for my bus ticket, my meals, and arranged a college visit for me. It was because of this experience that I decided to attend Cornell College, where I graduated a semester early in December of 2016. The college process at Noble is really unique. I remember having to make a PowerPoint presentation to my parents to argue my case about why I wanted to attend Cornell. The advisors asked really tough questions. My parents were so grateful that the school took the time to work closely with us so we understood every step of the college application process. I now work for Chicago City Council as a legislative aide at the Committee on Finance. I started my career there in June of 2017. Since I graduated from Cornell, I am pursuing my master's in public policy at Northwestern University. Noble hopes to continue to share the tools like The Bot with CPS to ensure that all students have the support needed to attend the college that best fits for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. de la Torre. Our next speaker then, Irma Hidalgo, last call. Moving on to the next speakers, Mr. President, we have Speaker Number Fifteen, please, Angela Butler, followed by Speaker Number Sixteen, Bridgette Harris, Speaker Seventeen, Laurel Hansen.
Good morning, everybody. How are you doing? I've been here. My name is Angela Butler. I have three students. I've come here over and over again. But first, as always, I just want to make sure I let you all know. I believe the children are the future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. With that said, I'm here because I believe I was not clear about the complaint that I had as far as what happened with my family during the time when we were homeless. And I feel like you all have been receiving a biased, one-sided story. I came last week, and I provided a couple copies of our story with Susan to provide to you, and I also have an extra copy, if you don't mind taking this and viewing over it. But I just want to run over the list of the things that occurred, and even with coming to the board meetings and trying to speak to someone, it appears like I'm being blackballed even trying to get into the building. I'm not receiving visitors passes, can't even speak to someone. I always have to wait till I come to the board meeting. But we've had enrollment discrimination with my special needs son, denial of our human rights, my parental rights. Some of my documents have been falsified. I believe there's been an assassination of my credibility and character as a parent and a civilian. And even with the complaint that's in here or the response, it's dated September 2017. I am just now seeing this and reviewing this for the first time of September 2018. This was never presented to me. I had no idea that they had met with any of the staff members or any of that, so I'm assuming that that's just a parental, my parental rights just were violated. So I'm hoping that we can reach some sort of conclusion. And once again, I understand you all have a lot on your table. You're doing a great job. I'm not here to try to incriminate no one.
Ms. Butler.
I'm just here to, I'm sorry, just be an advocate for my children, and I believe that is what makes children better students when they see that they can have their parent advocating for them in a system where there's a lot of corruption and stuff. So I hope that we can work together, and if you want to take this, I greatly appreciate it that you all reviewed this in great respect to my family. And it's not so someone could just talk to me. I want a resolution to these issues that have been, not been addressed, to where I believe, because I'm not getting any response from anyone. Thank you. And I apologize. It seems like an ongoing drama, but that is not my intention. I'm just trying to make sure that my children are in a safe environment.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you.
And our next speaker, please. Speaker Sixteen, Bridgette Harris.
Good morning to the board and to all on today. Again, my name is Bridgette Harris. I'm a proud parent of a Chicago public school student who is currently a freshman at Sin High School. I would like to speak with you about Rogers Park Parent University and Sullivan High School on the north side of Chicago. I have been a participating parent since the beginning, when it launched in January 2018. There are three highlights that I am so excited about. One is the Parent Coding Club. Congratulations to Lorenzo Craig with CPS, who is our teacher. Our last class is next week, but he has been with us for some months now, and he is awesome. So we just want to congratulate him. He did get a promotion, and now we'll be working with the children under CPS and hope that we can work with him in the future as we continue, you know, to go on. Our Cooking Club, which is side-by-side, and it's a group of parents in Sullivan High School, and we work with the Diverse Learner students. And so we did have at one point the Cooking Club, and so it's still participating, it's still going on, and we will also have the Participating Cooking Club again, so it should be coming real soon. Thank you. And three, the Drama Club. Oh, my God, it's so exciting. We are writing and doing a play at Truman College. And so we would like to invite Dr. Janice Jackson, our CEO, and also the entire board. So we're asking if you can please come and be a part of that. It's going to be Thursday, December the twentieth, at ten o'clock AM. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and it's great being here. This is my first time, and I'm excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
You're welcome.
Your enthusiasm is contagious.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker Seventeen, Laurel Hansen. As she approaches the podium, I will call Speaker Twenty-Two, Louis Peister, followed by Speaker Twenty-Three, Cam and So. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Laurel Hansen, and my son is Mason Rodriguez, and he's a six-year-old first grader at Smizer Primary Center. Mason has periventricular leukomalacia, which is a brain injury, and because of this, he has epilepsy, cerebral palsy, hemiplegia, laryngeal malacia, which is an airway issue, and is genetically has Ehlers-Danlos and ADD. Mason's doctor requested his medical condition due to his medical conditions and nurse be on staff last year. This request was never fulfilled. Mason had an EEG on June of 2018, and it showed his seizures had become more often in frequency. I requested an emergency IEP three weeks prior to this school year, and this has still not happened. His doctor prescribed Diazepam, an emergency rescue medication that is needed to be given rectally, and it was returned to me since there is no one certified to administer my son's medication. He also takes CBD oil, and I was told that they could not accommodate this because CPS has not updated its policy on CBD oil, even though it is law. So at this moment, they have returned back my son's Diazepam. He has seizures every single day, three different types of them, and the school has informed me that they'll call 911. So my son's life is being put at risk, and nobody's being done. I've passed multiple meetings. I've gotten Illinois Raise Your Hand, and I filed a complaint with the ACLU recently. So there is no one on staff to save my son's life. And last year, because of them not being medically trained, it's not a teacher's job to be medically trained. Because of that, his seizures got much worse, and his quality of life was diminished. He was five years old and potty-trained, and now pees every single night through the night because he sees seizures every single day. So, thank you.
Your parental challenges are extraordinary.
I'm a single mom on top of it. So it's like there's no help at all for us.
Ms. Burgess standing behind.
Dr. Jackson, were you saying something?
Ms. Burgess, the parent administrator is going to get more information.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please. Louis Peister.
Good morning. It is. First of all, I filed a Freedom of Information request about student membership, and I hope that I will get it in a response in a timely manner. First of all, I've raised this question about communication between the CTU and the CPS under Article 1-11, and I understand from Dr. Jackson and others that you guys are working on it, but I would like to know how you guys, how that's working out. And I've raised this question about a hotline and all that, but maybe simply when President Sharkey meets with you, that he provide a list of special needs questions, you know, and cleanliness with the special needs, maybe something with the school nurses, because that seems to become a critical issue. And hopefully, by sitting down with you in a timely manner, responding so that you will resolve some of those issues, so come January and February, there are not people coming up here and yelling at you or that you don't care about our children. You have worked it out with the CTU. That's what the CTU is supposed to do. That's what the CPS is supposed to do. I've raised, over the last few months, the issue of the staffing of minority teachers, and I'm looking for how you guys are doing that with African-Americans, Latinos, and Asians, and how you've been reaching out to fill some of those staffing concerns. And with that, maybe you need to look at the legislature to see if there's some help there or the State Board of Education, and I would like some response to what I've been just saying. I hope you're not closing out any more librarians. Let me, two quick things I want to say. A few months ago, you talked about water pipes, and Arnie was going to get back to you, but there was no back to you that I noticed in a public session. You guys were, you know, someone got up here and said you were poisoning the children, and you obviously are not trying to poison. So Arnie was going to do that. And one real quick one, the CTU argument with the charter schools was not so much the matter. The CTU problem was that the charter schools were taking the kids from the traditional schools and putting them into charter schools. That was the argument. If you make the charter schools better, then they won't go to, more likely, the traditional schools.
Thank you, Mr. Peister.
That is the argument.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is Arnie or anybody going to respond to anything I said?
Let me respond to the lead water situation. So two things. So I know Mr. Peister has brought this issue up, so I will address it. We are bringing a formal presentation to the board at the next month's board meeting that will be led on our asset side as we kick off the next phase of lead water testing in early 2019. But as everyone recalls, in 2016, CPS instituted a water-led testing program where we tested at all 526 of our campuses, any potable source of water, any fixture that tested for elevated levels of lead, the fixtures were either replaced, mitigated, or decommissioned, and subsequent testing after that to make sure that the water was clean was done. In 2017, the state of Illinois passed Senate Bill 550, which required every district in the state of Illinois to do what we did by the end of this calendar year. Obviously, you know, that's not enough for us. We want to, you know, go above and beyond. In September, the board did approve a contract with a company called 120 Water Audit, which will begin the Phase Two of our lead water testing, which will begin in 2019, where it will be a multi-year process in order to retest every potable source of water. On top of that, we initiated new flushing protocols at all of our schools to make sure that, as everyone knows, flushing the water before students enter the building is the best way to keep lead out of the system. But we've also done, we have a couple pilots in place for automatic flushers, in which we have three schools that are using automatic flushers, which flush automatically during the course of the day. We'll be looking to expand that to at least twenty-five schools next year. So at the next board meeting, there will be a much more comprehensive, you know, process in regards to Phase Two, but I did want to be respectful to Mr. Peister and the board who have asked questions in the past.
Thank you very much, Arnie. Thank you.
Can I have some update?
Thank you very much.
Some of those stuff I asked.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. President, will be Speaker Twenty-Three, Cam and So. As he approaches the podium, the next speaker will be Speaker Twenty-Five, Joseph Pace, followed by Speaker Twenty-Six, Annabelle Perez, and Speaker Thirty, Leo Barda Garcia. Thank you. Can you please state your name? You can proceed.
Okay, thanks. Hello, my name is Cameron So. I'm a graduate of Northwestern.
I'm a graduate of Northwestern University School of Education and Social Policy. For the past two summers, I've led the Citizen Science Ambassador Program at Adler Planetarium, which ended a few weeks ago. I'm speaking here today as a citizen. Since I last addressed the board, a number of major stories have broken in the news regarding the role of technology in our lives, not least of which was the Cambridge Analytica revelations, or more recently, the hack of millions of Facebook accounts. A growing chorus of technology leaders, engineers, scientists, along with those in the press, have been warning of the consequences of social media use as currently constructed. From Tim Cook at Apple, to Elon Musk, to Sean Parker and Tristan Harris, as well as a growing number of former employees at major social media companies, many have been warning about the byproducts of our reliance on some of the more popular social media platforms. To quote the Center for Humane Technology, "When Snapchat turns conversations into streaks, when Instagram glorifies the picture-perfect life, when Facebook segregates us into echo chambers, leaks our data, and designs its suites of products to be intentionally addictive, there are consequences. There are consequences for the minds of students and teachers alike, and they are profound and some as yet unrecognized. Learning is in large measure about knowledge, thinking, and behavior. These platforms have dramatically changed the landscape for all of the above, with profound consequences for civic society." When Jaron Lanyard, head of research at Microsoft, is making the rounds in the business press, stating in no uncertain terms that these systems have profound effects on thinking and behavior in ways not dissimilar to the infamous Skinner box experiments he should be taken seriously. I'm here with a simple message to the board. Schools and districts must play a key role in raising awareness among teachers, administrators, as well as students and parents, as to the consequences, trade-offs, and concerns of widespread reliance on social media platforms as currently constructed, especially regarding the cognitive and behavioral effects seen and hidden, as well as regarding the information we are presented or not, as well as regarding how these dynamics relate to learning more generally, as well as broader civic society. This issue warrants much more consideration than is being given at present. Our future leaders cannot afford to be glued to their screens. Thank you.
That is really quite insightful. And I think you're addressing a problem that most people probably are not anywhere near as aware of, as you obviously are. You mentioned the Adler Planetarium. What did you do there?
I led the Citizen Science Ambassador Program during the summer. It's a program geared around.
I know what it is. I've had a lot of affiliation with the Adler over the years. But I thought you raised a very substantive issue that most people probably struggle to fully comprehend. And hearing it coming from such a young person caught my attention. I think that Dr. Jackson and Chief McDade, who just had to leave, are probably fully aware of it, but I think they probably appreciate your insights. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 25, Joseph Pace.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Pace, Special Education Classroom Assistant for CPS. I want to briefly revisit an issue I brought to the attention of the board, both at a previous meeting and in writing. There was an issue at Skinner North, who I was assigned to, where I raised an issue of both administrators not doing their due diligence in presenting my middle-of-the-year evaluation. By raising that issue, I was subjected to retaliatory disciplinary action. Again, this has been brought to the attention of the board before, and no one has been responsible of that. So today, I bring direct questions that maybe Dr. Jackson, you can answer. Dr. Jackson, I want to know, is it typical that moments after a staff member is assaulted by a student, that staff member being subjected to an open-door interrogation in the main office? Is that typical in your experience?
Dr. Jackson doesn't have to respond to you. I want to just let you go through your comments.
My next question would be, is it typical, after a student makes a claim that he was subjected to corporal punishment by a student, is it typical that that student is still left in the care of that very same adult? Is that typical? Is it typical that the disciplinary action taken against me, written reprimand, be issued on a form letter that does not include any specific wrongdoing on my part? Is that typical? Is it typical to proceed with an investigation when video evidence does not support the claim? Is that typical? Is it typical to proceed with pre-disciplinary action when DCFS declines to investigate because they don't see any evidence of any wrongdoing? Is that typical? Is it typical that the guardians of the student are not informed of wrongdoing by an adult that is placed in that, that has supervision over that student? Again, by no one responding to this, I leave with more questions than I do answers. This board, school leadership, is not honoring its commitment to protect students. You inconvenienced an entire district of employees for background checks and fingerprints, yet you have done nothing to protect this one student.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker 26, Annabelle Perez. Thank you, please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Annabelle Perez. I am a parent and LSC president at Cooper Academy. I am here accompanied by our parents from Cooper and Orozco Academy. Here to speak to you about our request for boundary reassignment that will allow Peter Cooper Dual Language Academy to expand to a K-8 school. And for a school specialization plan that will allow Orozco Fine Arts and Sciences Elementary to expand their gifted program and make the school a world language school. For the past two years, both schools have been in discussions with CPS to implement these changes as part of the Pilsen Schools Initiative, which was organized by schools, community organizations, and school district leaders, which we have also letters of support from them. We believe that expanding Cooper to a K-8 school will better serve students and will be most beneficial when implementing the dual-language program. Students will develop the necessary language acquisition to be fully bilingual. We also know that it is proven that students are most vulnerable in the periods of transition from one school to another. Our students currently transition from elementary school to middle school and from middle school to high school. Allowing Cooper to expand to eighth grade will ease transition on our students. Our students will have academic continuity in middle school, continuing the dual-language program, and will have an easier transition into ninth grade. This will set them up to be successful and on-track in high school and even improve their ability to obtain the Illinois State Seal of Bilingual C, which is something the district has been promoting. I have attached, well, I have brought in a letter of support from our LSC, also from the Orozco's LSC, again, from former, I mean, from community organizations, from state.
Ms. Perez?
Yes, okay. Let's see, finishing or continuing? So this is a plan that Cooper and Orozco both want. Our children deserve the opportunity to have schools designed to prepare them for success, and we hope that you listen to our needs and support our request. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is Leobarda Garcia in your group?
I'm sorry, she wasn't able to attend.
Okay, and what about Marisa Santiago and Guadalupe Carrion?
Yes, my name is Marisa Santiago.
Okay, you can proceed.
Okay, good afternoon, board members. My name is Marisa Santiago, and I am a parent and on the LSC at Orozco Academy. I am here today because I want to speak in support of allowing Orozco to expand its gifted program and Cooper becoming a K-8 grade school. Our schools have met and discussed this plan. We have talked to the parents on both sides, the community, and our principals. We believe that this plan is a win-win situation for both schools. Allow me to explain why. Our academy, Orozco Academy, is a regional gift center, the only one serving English language learners in the southwest side of Chicago. Our school provides a gifted program for families looking for education opportunities not currently available in our communities in the southwest side. I live in Brighton Park, but my children are enrolled in Orozco. Last year, we had, Orozco had 111 applicants, and 83 students, 83 children had to be turned away, with allowed only 28 students in the gifted program. We believe it is necessary to expand the gifted program at Orozco because families in the southwest side deserve access to quality education like the one provided at Orozco. In addition, Cooper has a dual-language program, which will be most beneficial for its students if students could attend the school through eighth grade. If Cooper becomes a K-8 grade school, Orozco can expand its gifted program and then implement world language programs. We want a world language program in our school because this program will support the Spanish language skills of heritage speakers at our school. Our request for this plan is part of a specialization of schools in Pilsen for the Pilsen Quality of Life Plan. This is a plan which has been designed and approved by parents, community stakeholders, and principals at our schools. I have submitted a letter of support from our local school council and petitions that were collected from parents, which also backs the boundary reassignment of Cooper and the expansion of the gifted program at Orozco. I also want to say thank you to our, for support to our state representative Teresa Ma and to our alderman Solis. Also, just want to say thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Guadalupe Carrion?
Can I say, I need you to translate it? Buenos dias, mi nombre es Guadalupe Carrion. Soy madre de familia y vicepresidenta del comité del PAC de la Escuela Orozco. Quiero darle gracias, quiero dar las gracias a la doctora Janice Jackson por acudir a la cumbre de educación en Pilsen la semana pasada. Gracias, doctora Jackson, because siempre usted apoya a nosotros los padres. La Escuela Orozco es una escuela que ofrece, que ofrece educación de calidad para familias del sur oeste de Chicago. Mi familia y yo vivimos en la villa. Sin embargo, mis hijos han estudiado en la Escuela Orozco por el programa Gifted. Creo que es necesario expander el programa Gifted porque de esta manera brindamos más oportunidades a familias como la mía, que buscan una educación de calidad más allá de las opciones disponibles de nuestros vecindarios. La Escuela Orozco tiene una lista de espera de más de 110 estudiantes. Cada año alrededor de 85 estudiantes son rechazados ya que hay espacio limitado para el programa Gifted. Es por esta razón que nosotros apoyamos que la Escuela Cooper se convierta en una escuela de kinder a octavo grado para que de esta manera Orozco pueda expander su programa Gifted. Tengo entendido de un análisis reciente. El porcentaje de estudiantes latinos que están en escuelas nivel 1, 1+, solo es el 72%, comparado con los estudiantes blancos, quienes el 91% están en escuelas de calidad. Yo me pregunto, ¿por qué la discrepancia? ¿Por qué no convertimos a Orozco a una escuela Gifted completo para promover más oportunidades a familias latinas? Los padres de Orozco y Cooper hemos contemplado este plan por varios años. Hemos hablado con nuestros directores y con nuestros oficiales electos como la representante Teresa Ma, el aldeman Solis, y todos estamos de acuerdo en un plan que todos salimos ganando. Aquí les entregamos unas firmas de más de 100 padres de familia de la Escuela Orozco quienes están de acuerdo con este plan. Gracias a una buena educación temprana. Ahora mi hijo está en la Universidad de Michigan en Ed Arbor.
Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Guadalupe Carrion. I'm a mother of a family. I'm vice president of the PAC at Orozco. I want to give thanks to Dr. Jackson for assisting the Pilsen Education Summit. Thank you for always supporting our parents. I'm here today in front of the Board of Education to consider changing the school Orozco and expanding our students into a world language academy. Orozco is a school that offers education of quality to families on the southwest side of Chicago. My family, we live in Little Village. However, our children attend Orozco and the gifted program. We think it's necessary to expand the gifted program in a way that can bring more opportunities to families like mine, who look for a quality education for the students and having more options available in their communities. Orozco has a waitlist of 110 students. Last year, about 85 students were rejected from the school because there's limited capacity in the gifted program. For this reason, we support the school Cooper converting into a K-8 program. That way, Orozco can expand their gifted program. I have, it's my understanding that a recent analysis projected that Latino students in these schools that are level 1 or 1+, only comprise 72% of the students compared to their white counterparts that comprise 91% of those students that attend the same quality of those school, level 1 and 1+. So I ask myself, why is there a discrepancy? This is why we need to convert Orozco into a gifted program that's complete and that can offer more opportunities to Latino families. The padres of Orozco and Cooper, we understand, we've been working on this, contemplating this plan for several years. And we talked to our principals, our officials, Representative Ma, and our alderman Solis, and we are all in agreement that a plan is what's necessary. We have 100 signatures of families from Orozco that are in agreement with the plan. And we also want to give thanks to our, what, good education. Early education is very important for the university. She has a child at Michigan, and she's very proud of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker 27, Erica Smith, followed by Speaker 28, Melissa Ramirez. We then have Speaker 31, Claudette Short. Please state your name.
Good morning, well, afternoon now. Good afternoon, my name is Erica Smith. I am a proud CPS parent of two students at our neighborhood public school, Waters Elementary. I'm here to represent some concerned parents, teachers, students, and community members from our school. In July, we were included in the list of schools to receive a new annex as part of this year's capital budget plan. And I want to start by saying thank you. We are extremely grateful for the investment CPS is making in our school and our programs. And we're really excited by the possibilities that this project represents. I assure you that the need is there, and we outlined our needs at the public hearings back in July. We know how fortunate we are to be included in this round of capital improvements when there is so much need across the district. We are a community of well-informed and actively engaged citizens. Thus, we have an expectation of transparency and public engagement throughout this process. The presence of surveyors and contractors at school in the last few weeks caught us by surprise and raised alarm. The community response and media attention could have been avoided. I'm thankful that Alderman Parr was able to convene a meeting with our school principal, people from CPS, and the Public Building Commission last week to discuss the status of the project, but I do remain concerned. COO Rivera was there, and he assured us that the project is still in the very early stages, yet the documents we obtained by FOIA from the PBC are not super consistent with that assertion. So we understand that there is a standard procedure. However, the standard procedure and generic architectural templates aren't appropriate for this unique site. Waters has a native garden with trees older than the city itself, and our ecology program is a, I'm almost done. Our ecology program is a one-of-a-kind environmental science initiative that is both locally and nationally recognized. We consider it to be, and it's also a model for CPS, by the way. It's used by other schools. It is not just a garden. We're not talking about some raised plots. We have a natural resource that is an asset to the city of Chicago, and it's a habitat for many native and migrating species. And it fosters the kind of educational experience that Dr. Jackson urges CPS parents and families to promote and to celebrate.
Ms. Smith, thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time. And we would hope that moving forward CPS and PBC will pursue annex options that preserve our natural resource.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you very much. Arnie, as I understand these comments, there's appreciation that you're addressing the capital issues, but I guess there's a challenge around the environmental component. Before you speak, this strikes me, and I say this as you get ready to respond. Years ago, when I was at my other job, one thing I always ran into when we would trim trees in many communities, no one wanted you to cut their trees back for the very reasons, I think, unlike what you were raising. And yet, without cutting the trees back, we couldn't get it to paralyze, it would fall down when the wind blew. It was always a very, very difficult thing to balance with the communities. Some of the communities that had the highest reliability issues also had the most trees. And yet, they wanted the reliability, they didn't want you to touch the trees. Ultimately, we'd have to reach a compromise because frankly, you'd have to do something with the trees because the tree lives. with the trees, because the tree limb will knock the lines down. I don't know if this is a complete analogy to the issues that you're raising, but I know that Arnie is trying very, very hard to address, within the limits of our capital budget, these construction issues that frankly haven't been addressed in years. So, and you recognize that, you just have some other issues. Arnie, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I can't speak to the documents that were forwarded by, regarding PBC. I can work with our partners over there to kind of get a sense of what's going on, but, you know, as we communicated at the meeting on Friday, an architect has not been assigned to that project. We're still in the planning stages and in fact, working on scheduling some planning meetings with CPS, the school community, and the Public Building Commission, making sure we have an understanding of all the programmatic elements as well as, you know, the environmental concerns, and making sure that the plan that's ultimately developed and implemented by the Public Building Commission will meet their space as well as programmatic needs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, Speaker 28, Melissa Ramirez, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Melissa Ramirez Cooper, Director of Communication at the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. Oh, thank you. As we anticipate CPS's report on the 20th day enrollment in the coming days, the value of this data is more than an assessment of what many are anticipating as the continued decline of student population among our city public schools. This data tells us something more about demand, marketability, school image and choice, neighborhoods, student retention, future classroom planning, budgeting, and so much more. But for many in the charter public school community, it's more than drawing data conclusions or about others drawing conclusions regarding charter schools. What is paramount for the charter public school community is the fostering of a child's academic growth, their well-being emotionally and socially. Day in and day out, that is our mission, and this mission is tended to by the valued partnerships among teachers, students, and their families. Families continue to choose charter public schools, and we've seen that in the numbers. The number of charter public schools in CPS has more than doubled from 60 in 2018 to 122 in 2017, with overall charter enrollment growing from 49,550 to more than 58,000 between 2013 and 16. But aside from, some of the most important statistics for charter students includes rising graduation rates, entering and persisting in college, as well as demographic, demographics, which also tells the charter story. More than 98% of students served by charter public schools are students of color, students who are English language learners and participate in special education programs. Charter schools emphasize a strong curriculum and culture, and a determining factor to the success of our schools is due to teachers. Charters understand that successful schools are the result of great charter teachers, and INCS honors the contributions of charter teachers to making both education and society a success. Building valued partnerships among teachers and students and families is a hallmark of the charter community for the purpose of creating safe, productive, and successful learning environments for our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. This is only addressing one of your comments. The decline in population starts at the state level, filters down through the counties, into the cities. It's not a direct reflection on the schools, it's a reflection on population trends that take place at the state levels, and of course, it ultimately reflects in the populations in the schools. I thought your comments were very balanced and thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you. Budelia Castro. As she approaches the podium, we will then call Speaker 39, Natasha Dunn, and Speaker 40, Jazz Dunn. We will then have Speaker 41, Jerry Brown, followed by Speaker 42, Kara Johnson.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Budelia Castro. Mis hijos van a la Academia Calmeca. Mi propósito es relacionado con lo dicho en la reunión anterior por parte de la presidenta del Consilio escolar y la escuela. Es verdad que nuestra escuela goza de nivel más alto otorgado por parte del CPS 1+. Es verdad que los niños están manejando tres idiomas en sus estudios. Es verdad que la visión de Calmeca desde su fundación ha sido la excelencia académica para todos los estudiantes. Es verdad que los maestros y equipo docente han trabajado arduamente en su labor de educar a los estudiantes, y es verdad que se logró 100% de graduación el pasado ciclo escolar. Sin embargo, dichos logros serán estropeados sin la ayuda de ustedes. El presente ambiente escolar está afectado, se nota una gran diferencia en la escuela, tanto que los padres han tomado la tarea de unirse y compartir las preocupaciones que tienen y que pronto afectarán a los estudiantes. La situación es grave. Aquí les entrego más de 100 firmas de padres de familia que están pidiendo su ayuda. Como padre de familia, me gustaría que Calmeca siguiera siendo ejemplar para otras escuelas y que siguiera con el mismo ambiente que la ha caracterizado en estos últimos años. Un ambiente sano y agradable para todos, tanto estas, maestros, padres, y principalmente a todos los estudiantes. La directora anterior nos dejó una base firme, que si la seguimos como equipo, la Academia Calmeca llegará a ser un verdadera escuela modelo para CPS. Por favor, ayúdenos.
Thank you, Ms. Castro.
Good morning. My name is Ms. Castro. My children go to Calmeca Academy. My message today is related to the speech given by the school's LSC president last month during the monthly board meeting. Truth, our school has earned the highest level 1+ rating bestowed by CPS. Truth, our children are being taught in three languages. Truth, the school's vision clearly speaks out academic excellence for all students since its foundation. Truth, teachers and staff have worked earnestly as a team in providing the best quality education for all students, and it is true that we once again have had 100% graduation for all eighth grade students last year. However, such achievements will be damaged without your help. The present school environment is affected. We have noticed a big difference in the school, so much that parents have taken the task of joining together and sharing their concerns and expressing how these will soon affect the students. The situation is serious. I am sharing with you 100 signatures of parents who are asking for help. As a parent, I would like for Calmeca to remain exemplary for other schools, to follow the same characteristic environment that it had, it has had in the last years. A healthy and pleasant environment for everybody, staff, teachers, parents, and especially all the students. The former principal left us a firm basis, which if we follow it as a team, Calmeca Academy of Fine Arts in Dual Language can become a model school for CPS. Please help us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speakers, Mr. President, 39, please. Natasha Dunn, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Speaker 40, Jazz Dunn, last call. We move on to Speaker 41, Jerry Brown, please.
Good morning, you all. I'm Jerry Brown, I'm currently a fifth grade teacher at Fort Dearborn. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my job. During the CPS read background check, I was required to present dispositions for the cases where I was arrested. After carefully reviewing the paperwork I submitted during the background check, I was sent an email on September 12th stating that I had been cleared to come back to work as a fifth grade teacher. Then, a few weeks later, I received a correspondence that asked me to report to a hearing based on allegations that presumed my conduct was unbecoming as a CPS employee. At that hearing, at that hearing, I learned that despite being cleared on September 12th, I was having the hearing because I violated a policy that states an employee was to report any convictions within five days of the conviction. I was completely unaware of that policy. I've been in education for the last 10 years, I found my home at Fort Dearborn. I moved from a TAT to a PAT position because of the value I've added to the schools. My student missed out on having a stable teacher at the beginning of the school year, and now they are missing out on a quality education for me as well. I feel like the recommendation of termination is unjust punishment, especially since I was cleared to report back to work on September 12th. It's disappointing to learn that my offense isn't the reason that I stand before you, but a technicality of not understanding or being aware of a CPS policy. It is my hope and prayer that you all allow me back into the classroom so I can continue to lead my kids to academic success. Thank you.
Joe, I don't know that you're aware of this particular situation. Is this something that we can take another look at?
Yeah, I will take a look at it. You know, if I support.
I can't give you a concrete answer. The fact that you rehabilitated yourself, obviously, speaks well for you. We can look at it. I can't say more to you right now, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker 42, please, Kara Johnson.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Kara Cobb Johnson, and I'm a parent at Wildwood World Magnet IB on the city's north side. I'm here to respectfully request for the Board to offer the principalship of our school to Marisol Negron effective immediately. A little history on the matter, our LSC worked tirelessly over the past summer, sifting through eligible candidates to lead our school forward after Mary Beth Coonat retired. Two candidates rose to the top, Marisol Negron and Susan Pike. After being interviewed by the community teachers, students, and parents, both of those candidates were, the LSC offered the position to Susan Pike. Within three days, she rescinded her name from the process, and half of the community has heard nothing about Marisol Negron, whom we supported. I respectfully request for the Board to offer the principalship or interim principalship to Marisol Negron effective immediately. Per exhibit, the paperwork that I've given you, we've had an interim principal who has suggested that it's having a negative effect on our student body not having leadership. We have a dark music room and a library with no, nobody, no, our community has put a lot of money into buying these instruments, and nobody's playing them. We have no music. We had a choir, we had a band last year, and that has all stopped. It's, it's, currently, we have an administrator who was the principal of the school 10 years ago when it was not performing at the level it was when Mary Beth left last year. And I think we're having a difficult time putting somebody in the position because of what happened with her leaving. I just hope that in the future that the Board can protect our principals for ensuring that, what their goal is, is to have inquiry and have communication and adult conversation, and protect them from, you know, online cyber people that might steer them away from leading our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 43, please, Xavier Lee, followed by Speaker 44, Grace Dawson, Speaker 45, Carolyn Towns, and then we'll have the last speaker, Inez Swanson. Xavier Lee, please, last call. Next speaker, Grace Dawson.
Thank you. Better late than never. Good afternoon, President Clark, Board members, Doctor Jackson. I stand before you today to ask for your approval of the Dusable Alumni Coalition for Action's proposal to consolidate the two small schools currently housed in the Dusable High School building, and allowing the new 21st Century Dusable High School of Advanced Technology to open. Restoring Dusable to one school will utilize our limited resources more effectively, will eliminate rivalry and unhealthy competition existing between the two schools, will provide a safer environment, will increase the low enrollment that now exists, and will allow more curricular offerings, will involve parents and community in high percentages, will produce greater team participation, and will allow CTE experiences to operate in the school. The legacy and historical background of Dusable can help enhance the self-esteem of students by letting them know that people who look like them made and are still making a good living, are productive citizens, and are leaders in the world. By providing an outstanding academic program and managing a wholesome social and emotional atmosphere, by offering tutoring for difficult subjects, and taught by an outstanding staff and administration, all students will experience success in this neighborhood school. Can it happen at the new Dusable? You bet it can. Partnerships with Discovery Partners Institute, the University of Illinois, COMEd, Dawson Technological Institute, Kennedy King City College, Northeastern Illinois University, Chicago State, Bronsville CAC, Timothy Community Corporation, and others will help us to reach this goal.
Ms. Dawson.
Thanks so much for your concern for our students. Handouts have been given to you for the draft proposal for the new Dusable in the 21st Century.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Our next speaker, please, Carolyn Towns.
Good afternoon, President Clark, CEO Doctor Jackson, and all Board members. My name is Carolyn Towns. I'm the former principal of O'Keefe Elementary School. Today, I represent the Dusable Alumni Coalition for Action. I'm here to present a proposal for the new Dusable High School of Advanced Technology. Our objective, serve a diverse group of students who will enroll in the new Dusable School of Advanced Technology. The new Dusable School will be different from other schools because of its rich history of educating and producing many, many students of great ability and renown. The rich history of Dusable High School will be the basis for thought, motivation, innovation, familiarizing every one of its productive and innovative alumni. An outstanding curriculum and productive teaching strategies will be operative to create excitement about education, which leads to the appreciation of an outstanding education. Our students are prepared to be global citizens and future world leaders such as our alumni are. Numerous Dusable graduates were and are employed by the Chicago Board of Education, major corporations, governmental entities, and have self-employed businesses. A safe passage, a positive environment, local school council and parent advisory council support, business partnerships and university partnerships are a part of the new Dusable focus. A powerful curriculum and a creative curriculum will be employed at the new Dusable. For example, advanced technologies such as coding, new sciences, pre-engineering, energy, web design, and digital media, to name a few. We strongly recommend that the Board of Education approves this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Towns. Our next speaker is Inez Swanson, followed by Brenda Delgado, please. Ms. Swanson.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. If you would allow me, I would like to give three thank yous out. One to Doctor Jackson, from Monday on your ARA meeting, I would like to say thank you for letting the parents to give their input. I also would like to say thank you to my face manager, Thaitira Towns, for the Pullman University. I would like to say thank her for taking me to the Apple Store and for having the coding classes, and thank to Torlee Green for coming to the Pullman University and giving me LSC training. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Our next speaker, please.
Well, that was, that was, that was really nice.
Brenda Delgado, please.
Hi, I'm Brenda Delgado. I'm on the Board of Raise Your Hand. I'm being joined by Joy Clendenning, also of Raise Your Hand. I'm also the chairperson of the Skinner North LSC, and I'm here speaking as an individual. I have three kids in three CPS schools. I attended the Lincoln Park ARA meeting where Chief Education Officer McDade gave a very inspirational opening in her remarks. My eldest attends there at the IB program, and I was excited to hear the words that she was saying during her opening remarks. She was speaking about transparency as part of the regional analysis. She was talking about working from the same set of data, and she was talking about working together with parents and communities to decide how to move this district forward. I think that's an achievable goal. Something that I noted immediately, though, was the validity of the data. So, something I had, number one concern was the capacity numbers that were being used. Since I have two children in two Lincoln Park area schools, and I'm chairperson of the Skinner North LSC, I know that we have two classrooms, kindergarten through eighth grade, fully capacity at 32 children per room, which is a very full classroom. We are a selective enrollment school, so we can cap enrollment, and we do that at 32. That means that the capacity being used in that analysis for that individual school was 600. We are full at 525. We do have extra rooms that are currently not being used, or reuse them for maybe an art project, but we do not have extra capacity of 75 seats at that school. In my individual group, which also included the principal of Manier and Pastor Blakey from NNUP, we also looked at other schools in the area and noticed that the capacity numbers are not accurate because you are either counting 36 kids per classroom, which is atrocious. is atrocious, or you're counting every single room closet as teaching space, which is also not acceptable. So, I'd love to work and see that that data is being presented, but let's make sure that we are having valid data and not inflating numbers to say that we have extra seats at level plus schools when we do not.
Ms. Delgado?
Yes.
Can you please conclude?
We want to know what is a great school. It's not just SQRP. And I also want to recognize that at that, my group's comments were not being written down by the facilitator, but I did hear that Dr. Jackson was going to be reading all the comments individually that were being written down, which I did. So, listen to all the parents. They all have an equal voice. It is not just the eloquent parents that know how to state their own opinion for their own region. The entire district parents need to be heard as part of that regional analysis once we have working from the same set of data. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado.
As you leave, Chief McDade has had to leave today. I am fairly certain that any information or data that she would use would be information or data she believed to be accurate. Let me just suggest this. There may be, and that's, it may be a need, and obviously there is, to reconcile the two perspectives. I'm not going to call your numbers inaccurate, but I would, I believe Chief McDade would have very accurate information, so there's a need to do some reconciliation. Thank you very much.
President Clark, if you wouldn't mind, I had one update that I didn't share earlier, and then I did have a couple of responses. First, I neglected to announce earlier that the SQRP for Chicago Public Schools from last school year will be announced this Friday, so principals have been made aware of that via email this morning, and I wanted to state that for the record today at this public meeting. I also want to talk about Kilmer. I was happy to, I was happy that you asked a question around their satisfaction around the capital needs. We don't dispute some of the concerns that were raised, and as a result, Arnie will be going out to attend some of those visits that were referenced today, so I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that. However, I do think that there was one thing that was said over and over again that was not accurate, which was the reference to a budget cut at Kilmer, which is absolutely not the case. As we stated with the budget policy from last year, we did not cut any budgets at the, as a result of enrollment this year. Any reduction was the result of an advance that was given to the school where the principal, the local school council chair, as well as the network chief, signed off accepting that money and also accepting that if they fail to reach those enrollment numbers in their appeal, that the funds would be redistributed to the schools where those students attend. So, I just want to make sure that the record is clear. And then finally, I do want to get more information about the ARA session. If, if information was not captured, we do have reporters, recorders at each of those meetings, and there is a share-out portion at the end. So, if there was anything that wasn't captured, we would take that. We also distributed hard copies, and every single individual had an opportunity to write anything and submit that. So, there are multiple ways to share information, as well as sending that information directly to me, which my email is publicly available. The final point I want to make around the application process is that we are extremely proud of this process, and we will continue to, we will continue to engage communities directly. I personally accept that the challenge to be a better administrator and engage the community was, I do reject, is any direction on how that is done. This has been a very open process, and I agree with the last speaker that it's not just the eloquent parents with access and connection to other political entities that get to speak on behalf of parents, but I talked to hundreds of parents directly who are excited about the opportunity to finally have a voice about what they believe is best for their children in their respective communities, and I will continue to listen to them directly as I've committed to publicly and have invested a considerable amount of time to do that. Finally, we are not asking parents to complete applications. That would be inappropriate. We understand the equity issues related to that. We're asking principals who are paid to do this to submit that, and this is a departure from what we've done in the past where those decisions were made downtown in an office. I was in some of those meetings. Where we are now asking that the principal demonstrates the leadership to carry out the new academic program, that teachers don't have a program foisted onto them, that they are actively engaged in that process, and that parents are aware of what those programmatic changes mean for them. So, once again, I don't pretend that this process is ironclad, ironclad, but I know it is far better than anything I've ever seen in Chicago Public Schools in my 41 years of being associated with this school system, and I stand by that process wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. I don't mean to make light of anything you said, but when you said 41 years, I'm assuming you're including the time when you were a student.
Yeah, I've been, I'm always CPS.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes public participation.
Board members, any comments, questions?
Just one. I wanted to know, because I know that Dr. Dawson had been here before discussing the Dusable issue, so I wanted to know, is there anything to date on the status of what's happening?
Yeah, I was going to follow up directly. They, they sent some letters, but CPS is in favor of the plan and exploring it. However, we want to make sure that the full community is engaged. As Dr. Dawson and Ms. Towns pointed out, there has been considerable engagement with elected officials, community partners, second, post-secondary institutions. However, we want to make sure that the families of the students in both of the small schools are aware of what's being proposed. So, what we would like to do is meet with, we have representatives from our office that are meeting with the principals to do similar to what we did with the Ogden Jenner piece, which is to say CPS is open to this process, but allow for some space for us to really talk about what that means. I heard recommendations around the academic program that impacts teachers, so we want to make sure we do this right and do it well, but we are open to the process, but we have to make sure that the parents of the impacted students are aware of what's being proposed, and I don't know that we can say that as of today.
Thank you very much. This concludes our public participation section. So, let's see, board member heines, their motion?
Yes. I move for the passage of motion number 18-1024-M01 and the commencement of a closed session to consider matters permitted under Section 2C of the Open Meetings Act, subsection 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 21, as specified in the motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Can you strike the gavel?
A little slow today.
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with closed session items from the General Counsel, and I will begin with new and continued counsel retentions. These items do require a vote. First report, the law firm of Legal People, a temporary legal services agency for new. Second report, the law firm of Tastanius and Hollister LLP for continued retention. And the third report, the law firm Pugh, Jones &amp; Johnson, PC for continued retention. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion? Ms. Ward?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. I will continue with settlements, and these items do require a vote, and we have the first report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Joseph Palumbo, case number 09WZ046509. The second report is the workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Rozelle McHofflin Ashkinez, case number 16WC22741. And the third report is the workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Lloyd Norman Jr., case numbers 10WZ019975, 10WZ019976, and 10WZ019977. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items from the Chief Executive Officer. These items do require a vote. We have talent recommendations first, and they are: The first report, approve appointment of Chief Officer Office of College and Career Success effective November 12, 2018 for Michael Doosier. The second report, approve appointment of Chief Facilities Officer effective October 22, 2018, and ratify all lawful actions taken as Chief Facilities Officer since October 22, 2018 for Clarence Carson. We then have the third report, transfer and appoint Chief Equity Officer effective October 9, 2018, and ratify all lawful actions taken as Chief Equity Officer since October 9, 2018 for Maury Sweeney. Mr. President, we'll continue with warning resolutions, and we have first report, warning resolution, Deborah Boone Monroe, tenured teacher assigned to Jean-Baptiste Bobian Elementary School. The second report is warning resolution, Brian Jablow, teacher assigned to Suter Montessori Magnet Elementary School. The third report, warning resolution, Daphne Moore, tenured teacher assigned to Charles W. Earle Stumm Elementary School. And the fourth report, warning resolution, Raoul Valdivia, tenured teacher assigned to Mariano Azuela Elementary School. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote. We have the first report, resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the discharge of Daphne Moore, tenured teacher assigned to Earle Stumm Academy. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that this report also adopts a supplemental opinion and order under separate cover. I'll continue with the second report, resolution approving the Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. We then have the third report, resolution authorizing the honorable termination of regularly certified and appointed teacher. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with the motions, and I believe that Board Member Ward has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of September 26, 2018 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members, review these minutes and determine that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on September 26, 2018 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Thank you, and I believe that Member Furlong has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of September 26, 2018, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, I will now continue with a real estate item. This item does require a vote. Authorization to purchase 5700 West Berto Avenue for the former Luther North High School. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. I will begin with resolutions and one policy, and these items do require a vote. We have RS 1, 2, 3, and 4. Moving on to PO 1, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with communications, and these items do not require a vote. CO 1 is the communication regarding the location of the board meeting of December 5, 2018, and it reads, "This is to advise that the regular meetings of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, November 21, 2018, and December 19, 2018 will be consolidated and rescheduled to Wednesday, December 5, 2018, and will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m., and public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. For the December 5, 2018 rescheduled board meeting, advanced registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, December 30 at 10:30 a.m. and close on Tuesday, December 4 at 5 p.m. or until all slots are filled. Advanced registration during this period is available by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And to ensure equity of access to address the board, an individual may not speak at two consecutive board meetings. In the event an individual registers to speak at a consecutive meeting, the individual will not be called to address the board. Although advanced registration is recommended, you can also register to observe a meeting on the day of the board meeting via same-day in-person observer registration or, and the registration time opens at 10:15 a.m. and will remain open for the duration of the board meeting. Same-day in-person observer registrations are taken on a first-come, first-served basis as seats become available, and the public participation segment of the meeting will begin immediately following the CEO report and proceed for more than the six, for no more than the 60 registered speakers. CO 2, Mr. President, is the communication to reappoint a trustee to serve on the Public School Teachers Pension and Retirement Fund of Chicago for Gail Ward to the members of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago. I have reappointed Gail D. Ward to serve as a trustee on the Public School Teachers Pension and Retirement Fund of Chicago. Ms. Ward's reappointment term will commence on November 2018 and expire November 2020. Respectfully submitted, Frank M. Clark, President, and it's signed by you, Mr. President. We'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote, Mr. President. We have EX 1, 2, 3, ED 1, OP 1. Moving on to PR 1, 2, and 3, we then have PR 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do not require a vote, and we have EX 4. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that EX 4 has been revised, and the final will be included in the action. There was a principal name corrected for Principal Clauston from Richardson School. Moving on to EX 5 and AR 1, and, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please mark, received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and there are no further items on the public agenda.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.